Wait, so I will call this Board of Selectmen meeting to order in Millville on June 21st, 2021 at 7:02 PM. Okay. So announcements, so if you saw in your packets. This was something that I saw on social media. So Mary Ellen Spar and Rachel Foodie of Millville were honored by the Massachusetts State Senate for their work making mass and bell covers with the Blackstone Millville Regional School Band during the pandemic. So in addition to that, Rachel Foodie graduated from BMR in just three years. That was kind of impressive. So.
Congratulations.
I know, so congratulations to them. It was nice of Senator Fatman to go by and give them a little bit of recognition for that. But yeah. Pretty cool. Any other comments? Okay. So next in the agenda, so correspondence. Peter, say.
Nothing, no, nothing really. It's not in the rest of the body here.
Okay. So meeting minutes, May 3rd to May 17th, I did review them, I didn't.
June 7th is not available this evening, you'll get that the next meeting.
Yep, that's no problem. I did have one question, I noticed on both. Meeting minutes, Adrian is listed as clerk and not secretary, is that correct?
Yeah, so a technical term, it's a clerk or secretariat, you know.
Oh, it can be either, okay.
Yes, that's right.
All right, well then. I saw no issues with meeting minutes from either meeting then. Andrew and Adrian, do you see any? Adrian, Andrew, I know you're the eagle-eyed editor.
They weren't included in this week's, the packet, right? Okay.
No, they were in last week's.
Yeah.
Well, last time, two weeks ago.
Oh, I didn't, that's what I was thinking too, I'm like, I don't think I looked at them, so I wouldn't have any comments at this point, and it's because they weren't in this week, so that's my issue.
Just pulling up, because there was one thing, but I just need to make sure I got the right date and spot. Okay. So on the meeting minutes for. May 3rd, there's just a. On page five at the bottom where it says for Article 10, it says that I voted nay. Wait a minute, nope, sorry, wrong, wrong one, I apologize. So on, it was Article 11, I apologize, so top of page six. It has me voting. As an eye for the town bylaw elections. I don't remember, I voted nay on that. I. Do think one of us voted eye for it, I. Believe it was Adrian, but I'm not entirely sure.
Yeah, I think so, and was this one of the change, like, this is the same minutes we reviewed a couple of weeks ago, or not last meeting, because I wasn't here, but I feel like I had some corrections on the article votes as well when we reviewed minutes, so are we getting them again?
Yeah, I think we did change some of them, but we didn't, we've never voted on them, and they might not have been reflected, like, I think maybe, I'm not sure what happened.
Okay, no, that's fine. I'm just asking.
Okay. Adrian, you can ask as many questions as you want, no one here is.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that I can vote on them, so I don't know if we want to just punt this to the next meeting, if we need three people to pass, or if we just need the majority of the attendees, I probably just abstain on them, since I haven't read them yet.
Yeah, I think we just, we just need the majority of attendees, so if Andrew and I can agree on them, we both vote yes. And they'll get posted. So Andrew, what the, what do we need to amend, page six?
Yeah, page six, so on Article 11, we just need to change the vote, because I voted nay on that article, and I believe Adrian voted eye.
And we'll just have, you know, these are put together. We'll have, you know, Amy, just double-check the video on that to confirm. Not that I doubt you, but just to be sure, okay?
No, yeah, that was a while ago, so.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. So I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for May 3rd, 2021, with the correction on the Article 11 vote. Article 11 vote, yes. Looking for a second?
Sorry, I'm just double-checking something, because.
Okay.
There's something telling me I missed something, but. So on the same page up, so on citizen petition article. Did. For some reason, I don't, it doesn't look right, because I don't. Sorry, it's been a long time, so I'm kind of, but. Did we vote on that?
I don't.
It was a citizens petition.
In, actually. Yeah.
I thought you did.
We might have, I just.
Let me just look one place.
I think we were told, because Jackie joined that meeting, right? And I think, since the warrant was already open, we had to include the citizens petition, but are you saying whether we recommend it or not?
Yeah, because it was a citizens petition, so I thought, and I could be wrong, but I thought we had kind of discussed that and thought it would be kind of superfluous to vote on it, considering that we had no say in approving it or not, or recommending it or anything.
Yeah, I think there was a lot of discussion around how to amend it, and what the process is for presenting it as written. Um, I think we had discussions around how we would amend it and how that would work at town meeting, but I think you're right, Andrew, I think we did not vote on it for that reason, citizens petition. But that might be one we want to check the meeting, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just looking.
I was looking to see if I could find my, the warrant.
The warrant. With recommendations.
Yeah, that's why I was looking for that, too.
And I believe, well, let's just see. That's Article 1, citizens petition.
Yeah, so it's at the end.
Right. So it had selectmen recommend 3-0. Because there was lengthy discussion of the alternative source funding. And that thing, as I recall, put you all in support of this, but.
Yeah, that's right, because it looked opposite of the Finance Committee, and they were concerned with that. Okay, yeah, I think that is correct.
But, but while Amy's in there, she'll just double-check that there was an actual vote in support or recommendation of this. Okay.
Okay. So I will amend my motion to ask that Amy also double-check the citizens petition vote.
Yep.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Same.
Okay. All right. And then the May 17th meeting minutes. Andrew, do you want to postpone those a week, or do you feel comfortable voting on them?
Just double-check. It'd help if I had my notes, I never, memory's not what it used to be, I guess. Yeah, I think they're good. You can vote on them. I make.
Okay.
So I'm, okay, so I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of May 17th, 2021, as written.
I will second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Same.
All right. Yay, meeting minutes are approved. Okay. Departments, I don't see anything.
Nope.
Okay. So appointments, now I pushed this out to this week, because Adrian wasn't here last week, we were a small board, smaller, down one person, so that's why I moved out, now we're down one person again. Using that logic, I should potentially push out again. What is everybody else's, I can, I can be talked into either, I guess, maybe we should. I feel we should be consistent, but I hate to leave people kind of in the lurch. The flip side is, I would give, we do have a new person on the list to be appointed, which is an Assistant Building Inspector, and I didn't have a chance to speak with them at all, and I like to do that, so we would have the opportunity to do that, to speak with them if we wanted, so that's. The pros are being consistent in an opportunity to speak with the new building inspector, the cons are. These appointments expire on June 30th, so people would be, you know, kind of carrying over our four, 12 days into July, which, because our next meeting is July 12th. It's not a huge con, not gonna lie, because last year we did these appointments in August. So, so July would be better than last year. But I guess, and before we do that, so one thing, so Todd's answer is like, can everyone make it on the 12th, just to make sure, because I, I hate to keep moving the appointments meeting out.
Yep.
I don't think I have a conflict, I'm just double-checking.
Okay.
No, I don't have a conflict. Okay, so on July 12th, I can be there, too, so we'll have the three of us at least. And I'll tell Todd, like, you're at the next meeting, then that's it, we're doing it. Although I'm, well, for consistency, I, I don't like leaving people in limbo for too long.
Is there potential, Jen, would you want to just invite the Assistant Building Inspector, like, nominee, or whatever, to the meeting? Just so they, he also has the opportunity to introduce himself and any other questions? And I do. Please. One other question about this Assistant Building Inspector, I know the building inspector has pay, I don't know if it's a stipend pay, I know that there's a line item for pay. Is that, this, is the Assistant Building Inspector also compensated, or are they just like a non-stipend position, kind of like many of these other ones?
So he would be paid per inspection, and there is another interested party that surfaced, so, you know, between now and July 12th. The additional party may, you know, we'll talk to him as well, I think, and then you, you'll have choices, basically.
Yeah, and so, and to just use the first name, so we have Dale here on the sheet, I thought Ken was the one that Lincoln recommended, so was the name here incorrect?
Oh, that was, no, 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 I, I just had his name wrong, I couldn't, I couldn't remember his name, I put Ken, because I was dealing with Ken in some other manner, but it's Dale that we're talking about, and then you had somebody else that expressed interest.
Yep.
With what looked to be also good qualifications.
Yep.
And so I forwarded that information also on to Lincoln, Lincoln and I both met with Dale, who's currently on the list, last week, we met with him briefly, Lincoln at greater length.
Okay.
Am I allowed, I don't know how in-depth I can get, because I don't know, I don't want to go outside of what the agenda actually said was appointments, but. What is, like, why do we need another building inspectors, just like, Lincoln's not able to, like, our current one is not able to do, like, the amount of quantity that we have? I, I just, I guess I don't understand why we're going down this route.
Yeah, so if I can help with that, it's just more for backup, to the extent Lincoln's on vacation or away, and, you know, we had an incident period of time, you know, about a year ago, where he was away, unavailable, and we had to go outside to get somebody to do an inspection that needed to be done in a timely manner, so.
Okay, so it's not something we expect to be utilizing, like, frequently, it's just more backup, as opposed to.
Yeah, because it did cause issues in that one absence, it was.
Yep.
There was issues, so I will avoid those issues.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to be costly, because we already are paying.
Nope, that's. It's not going to be costly.
Okay.
One of the reasons why I reached out to Peter and Lincoln as well on that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, so.
And we, you know, just an opportunity to put the plug in, we do have other vacancies, which are listed on the town website, and we would welcome interested parties for Conservation Commission, Council on Aging, Cultural Council, Emergency Management, the Green Community Committee, Open Space and Recreation, Historical Committee, Parks and Rec Committee. Planning Board would be one, that there's typically an elected, but because there's a vacancy, it could, it would now be an appointment by the joint boards, to the extent somebody was interested. Unfortunately, selectmen, as we might have talked previously, you have to wait until the next election, or hold a special election, should there be somebody interested. Zoning Board of Appeals has a couple of vacancies, so there's a nice list, town like Millville does depend on its volunteers, and also I understand there's a vacancy on the Finance Committee at this point.
Yes, there is, I was going to mention that as well, thank you, Peter.
Yeah, so all of these are great ways to learn more about your town and how it operates, work with people that you get to become friendly with, and, you know, it's a, it could be a great experience, and I hope, you know, you don't necessarily require much background on the subject matter to be able to add some value. Background helps, though.
Yeah.
So that's my plug.
All right, great.
One, one quick question.
The appointment, oh, sorry, Andrew, yes, do you have a comment?
So for the Assistant Building Inspector, that would be strict, their, their role strictly be to do inspections, right? Okay, because, right, is there still a vacancy in the office for the, for the positions title, but the.
Yes, so the admin person. Is vacant, you'll be segueing into Section 6B, but in terms of, we talk about ARPA and what funds could be used for, but we did not fill that vacancy during the pandemic. We want to introduce. New personnel into the group.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, great, right, so table appointments one more time, I'm sorry, everyone, that you're in limbo for a little while longer, but July 12th, we will be doing it, and that's it. Regardless of the number of people. Well, unless we don't before. And then I obviously will hunt whoever's not here down. Okay, so 6B, the ARPA update and discussion, including CARES Act, so I read this very lengthy FAQ. So I found it to be actually more limiting, Peter, I don't know what your opinion was, or Adrian and Andrew, what your opinions are, but I was looking at, in terms of infrastructure, it's very, it's water. Broadband, and what was the third one, I can't remember.
So there are, yeah, there's a.
But it's very specific, like, like I was looking at, could we, you know, we're in need of a town, we're in need of a town hall, or making updates there, like, can we use the funds there? Nope. Can we use the funds to, you can't put anything into stabilization accounts, use it or lose it, we do have a bit of time to use it until 2024, which I thought was helpful, but it's very. For that letter, cover letter that I read, and Peter's, like, oh, we're going to be flexible, and I was kind of excited, but then you look at the FAQ and the details, and it's like, yeah, they're not being that flexible.
So it turns out something else came through from MMA Today, which is new guidance from Treasury, it looks like this, it's 34 pages.
Okay.
In part and parcel to it is the 151 pages from the Treasury of all sorts of. Well, let me just say, it's complicated, and one wants to find the opportunities, and they don't jump out at you. And I think I mentioned at the last meeting, I was going to sit in on a, you know, an MMA meeting with the Lieutenant Governor, and then folks who manage the CARES Act. Program, which is different than ARPA, they manage it on behalf of the state, and it's through those folks that we seek funds and get funds and re-provide CARES Act reporting, so I thought, well, maybe I'll learn something about ARPA, and I just want to show to you the minutes I took from that session. Nothing. I have no notes, I learned nothing. What I did learn was that the state people, who are the, sort of the keepers of distributing the money, are trying to be hands-off in terms of how you can use the money, they want the town to be more self-sufficient, if you will, and interactive on its own. So anyway, it, there's a lot of flex, there's some flexibility there, I don't know what it is, but take, for example, we were talking about the unfilled position. For the Assistant to the Building Inspector, also, it was, had helped out, the assessors helped out, building, it was an admin, it's an admin position, we budget for it, but my read of the ARPA stuff. And, you know, rules of compliance, is because I didn't fill, I specifically did not fill that position during the pandemic, I didn't know which way the financial results were going to go, I, I didn't want to introduce new blood, if you will, and potential new, you know, sickness into the town hall, beyond the folks that were already there, so had held off on filling that position. I read ARPA that says, we can refill positions that were, you know, not filled during the pandemic due to the pandemic, so, there, there's opportunity, not 100% certain, but by my read, I think it's a possibility. So there's that, we will talk later a little bit about, I think there, there is clearly opportunity for administrating this program, and therefore, looking closer into it, we're going to talk a little bit about that in one of our executive sessions, because I think that's where we have a good opportunity, it does deal with some negotiating strategies and things like that, that's why it's under executive session, we'll talk briefly about that. Yes, the water, but how you'd use it for water, I don't know, okay, it's complicated, but there's funding, I will say, we've already received $170,000 in the bank of ARPA money. Now that, I thought we were getting nearly about $470,000. But I guess there's some complication, I don't know yet exactly, I can't, you know, I haven't really looked too hard, because the money just came in, but I think there's two sets of sources of money, one is county-related, and one is federal-direct, and I think the half we got is the federal-direct, that's as simply put as I can make it. So we have a lot to digest, we have time to utilize the money. And we'll see, you know, we'll see, and I, you know, so you all will be the, at the end of the day, I believe, the chief executive of the town, which is really Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Will be the signatory to, once we. Fill stuff out, and there's reporting requirements, there's monitoring of compliance requirements, there's all sorts of stuff, which leads to what we're going to talk about later, as well.
Okay.
And I also included in there just a little bit about the CARES Act, because we still have, by my estimate, about 75 grand left to tap into, beyond what we've already received for specific purposes. I, I've outlined a little bit of a list of things where I think we're needing to ask for additional of funds of ours, destined for us, and the reasons why. And asked through those folks that I mentioned that gave me all these notes on ARPA, or no notes, jokingly, right? Those folks, if you've seen that email. Had turned down two requests for money that I thought made perfect sense for CARES Act money, and we talked briefly, I think, about that before, excuse me, but. You know, one is fixing the playground over by the police station to allow for, you know, socially-distanced, healthy recreational opportunities for children during the pandemic. Outdoors. Pardon me. But they turned that down. I'm still going to go at them again. They also turned down. Purchase of a, an industrial-grade mower to mow the fields up at MES and the play, you know, the rec fields. Because our normal contractor couldn't do the job, because he couldn't hire people, because of the pandemic was his, you know, he surmised was the reason. Again, they turned me down, we'll try it again. So that's my CARES Act, ARPA spiel, a lot to learn, we'll talk a little bit later in our little strategy session.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Anything else on ARPA update discussion and CARES Act? Okay. So year-end accounting transfers, so.
I have an email, I'm going to table this actually till your July 12th meeting, when we'll have more, more complete information, further refined, and we'll also include the Finance Committee in a joint session.
Oh, yeah.
Because they also have to approve, and I spoke to Aubrey today about that, so.
Great.
I think that, but you, this gives you a sense of the types of things we'll be dealing with.
Yep, so I see audit, assessor.
Yeah.
Admin salary, the fire department, building, streetlights, retirement, and other sources.
Yep.
Okay, sounds good. All right.
Good.
And then plan for future meetings in person under state pandemic policy extension. So I saw that through December, if I read this correctly, December 15th, 2021, we can have meetings remotely?
So actually, we got something through KP Law, and I don't know if you should, they should be including you on those things, but I'll forward tomorrow, or later, so it's, it came out just this morning, which is a summary of what the, you know, what the latest rules are. In your packet, I included the actual law that the governor signed, and it referenced all sorts of things that weren't part of that, and so you really couldn't tell, but under KP Law summary, the open meeting law, they've extended the opportunity for our remote, for remote meetings like we're having tonight, until April 1st, 2022.
Okay, I'm sorry, what was the date again, Peter?
April, until April 1st, 2022.
Okay. All right, I think maybe the December date was like the town, like the town meeting.
Town meeting stuff, maybe, yeah.
Okay, so I guess for us.
Quorums, quorums December 15th.
Okay.
And remote town meetings, December 15th, that's correct.
Okay, I knew something was December 15th. Okay. So I guess for us, I personally find the remote meetings very convenient. But I know people like going to the meetings, so I saw a neighbor, I was like, hey, I think, you know, where I have in-person meetings, and she was like, good, I like the in-person meetings, I like going, so. I was wondering if we wanted to do a schedule, like, the first one of every month is in-person, and the second one's remote, or flip it, vice versa, we have two every month. For the summer, I think, maybe in the interest of convenience, think about keeping the ones in the summer all remote. But those are just my suggestions, and certainly if anyone else has opinions, yeah, shout them out.
No, I mean, I think that's a good balance, Jen, in terms of, one, just letting the summer play out status quo, just given, kind of, people tend to be busy in the summer, and it's easier to attend if, even if you're out of town. But yeah, I think having, like, every other meeting, or, you know, where we pretty much standardize it, like you mentioned, is probably a good idea. I, I'll be interested to see what people think about that, because, I mean, we don't have much public forum participation online. I, I mean, I wonder if we're going to have a lot of participation in person, so we'll see, it'll be interesting to see if it changes much.
So. Is, oh, go ahead, Andrew.
No, I was, you can go.
Okay, so is there a preference, a preference for which one is in person and which one is remote? You have the longest commute, so I was even thinking, like, if we did the second one remote. Like, for example, the second one in December will be sort of near Christmas, so maybe you'll have things to do around the house, second one will be around Thanksgiving, same thing, those are kind of like the, the big holidays, where you might get a honey-do list from someone. to do things. So I was just trying to think of it that way. But then the first ones for like in September is right after the long weekend. So there are pros and cons to both, but I was thinking the second one would be remote and the first one would be in person. I thought that might.
Would it be possible to do a hybrid where you have it, where you can be remote, but also in person, like depending on how you choose?
I don't know. I think that's a question actually for Alex. Are we set up?
That's right. That begets a, y- y- you are allowed under the rules that the the Governor's Act allows for hybrids. So you can be both provided that you, you know, there are some restrictions on the person that's remote who can participate must have all the materials. And you can't introduce additional materials, that sort of thing. So there's a little bit of a logistical thing. And then more importantly, there's the technical challenge of, you know, our cable guys doing such a great job. I don't know how they would do a Zoom meeting at the same time they're filming, you know, at town hall.
Yeah.
So that's worth exploring though, to answer your question, I think, so that you know, we can ask that. I know Tim was a little bit you know, upset all this up reluctant. I think Alex, you're operating out of your where you live to be able to do this and the equipment's there. Is that a fair statement, Alex?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, the the issue with the hybrid, yeah, it just be, it becomes trying to get it so that way people can hear over both ends. I know there's like, you, you've heard, you've had in the past where people were in the same location. There becomes like an echo. And so there's just certain technical issues you kind of have to like overcome to make it work for everybody, but.
What about Alex? I just have a question. Does, do you have to transport equipment back and forth? Like if we were to say we're gonna have some in person and some remote and Peter just mentioned you have equipment at wherever you're located. Does that mean the equipment isn't at town hall and like it's gonna be like kind of a coming back and forth with equipment?
No, actually, we have, we have several different setups. So the the setup that's at town hall is, it stays there. And then we have sort of like portable kits. So, so yeah, there isn't a lot of like bringing gear back and forth.
That's good, especially if other committees decide to continue remote.
Yeah, exactly.
Or on site, one way or the other.
Okay. So it sounds like that might be challenging, Andrew, to do that. So maybe we can ask Tim and if it's some, if he can do it easily, but if not, then.
Okay.
But it's a good question.
I seem to remember a FinCom meeting where we had someone call in. And I think there were some rules about you had to have a quorum on site. And I'm not sure if that FinCom member could vote, but if we're talking about maybe Peter in a situation, you're not a voting member of the Board of Selectmen. So I don't know if you could call in. We've done that. I I'm almost positive we did that with at least one FinCom meeting.
And I appreciate your concern for me. Yes, I do have a lengthy commute. I'm quite happy to do remote meetings. But I don't think your decision making on this matter should really reflect that. Yeah, appreciate it. But I I think you should just think what's, what's the best way to hold meetings for the town? And if it's all Zoom meetings, yay. But no, it's I think you do have the face to face thing. I think, yes, people don't participate. But I'm pretty sure you'll have people in the audience who would be likely to participate when you do have your, you know, face to face meetings. So the alternate is a, you know, from my perspective is a great compromise, if you will.
Okay.
Another suggestion, we could just do like a one or two meetings in person as kind of like a pilot to see how it goes. And if, you know, there's a lot more public participation and that type of thing, we could possibly just, you know, switch over or kind of see how that goes. Like this fall, like it's September or something. Possibly.
Yeah. So I think we're all in agreement just to wait until the fall, Andrew, unless you feel like we should be doing this earlier, just to kind of get through the summer. Yeah. Revisit it in August and put a schedule together or something. Okay. Done.
Is this the group that decides that, like officially for the town or?
That's right. Yeah, Alex, you didn't know that you are amongst a political powerhouse quorum.
Look at that.
They make those decisions.
Well, I think they decide for elves, right? The other companies can decide for themselves.
Yeah, actually, that, you know, I'll just read for you one, one clause from KP Law. Even in municipalities where the chief executive officer has not adopted remote participation for boards and committees, individual public bodies may independently decide to continue holding entirely virtual meetings. So it's really up to the individual committees.
Okay, that makes sense.
I meant, we were sending it for this group. I'm sorry, Alex, if that wasn't you. You meant for the whole town, everyone?
Yeah, no, I meant for the whole town. I don't know. I got I'm like, oh, I guess this makes it simple now. But no, I I get it. It it makes sense, though. Everyone kind of has to decide for themselves.
Okay. Jen might have created some enemies if that was the case. You must meet in person. So, okay. All right. So let's table, so for the rest of the summer, status quo and we'll revisit this in August. I think that makes sense. Okay. I see nothing under old business, Peter?
Nope.
Okay. Alex, is there anyone on for public forum, speaking of participation?
I believe we got about three people watching, but we don't have any comments.
Okay. Selectment reports, any updates? We did move the Capital Planning Committee meeting from last week, the 16th through the 28th, because we were in like kind of that limbo week. So we were like, do we go into the town hall or are we on Zoom? And I wasn't sure. So I was like, you know what, I'm sorry. I I didn't realize I picked a bad week to schedule. Just cancel it, moved it to the 28th, and that way we can be certain there'll be, we need to be in the town hall or we'll be on on Zoom. And so then that will be a Zoom meeting as well. So anyone else? Andrew, you look like you want to say something?
Yeah, two quick questions. So and if you don't have an answer, Peter, that's perfect. But last meeting, I asked about, there was a library kind of poll going around. Did we ascertain if that was run by the library or another group or?
Yeah, I didn't get an answer to that. I did ask in one email. It had a couple of things, so I'll follow that up. And I'll let you know directly.
I get a library poll from the school because my daughter attends the elementary school. Is that the same poll? They're asking me if I get a library card or?
I saw that this one was on Facebook and it was under the page of the Millville Free Public Library. I don't know. But I don't know. I don't know. It might be the same one. And then the other one was if the senior center had sent any of their participation numbers for their, their activities to you or not. I remember asking them. I haven't received anything.
Yeah, no, I haven't gotten anything on that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Those are yours, yeah.
All right. Thanks, Andrew. Adrian, anything?
Uh, I guess I should just let you know, the Capital Planning Subcommittee of the School Committee, PMR School Committee has met a couple times since I last brought it up. I haven't had the opportunity to go to the meetings for, because of conflicts. But I think they are going to do a regular cadence of at least once a month. So just working with them to find out when that is so I can kind of make sure I plan for it. But right now I don't have an update, but that is still going on. And I do plan to attend.
Town Administrator Report, Peter?
Yeah, I just have three things. You recall, we talked last meeting about the CMRPC inter municipal agreement for Board of Health Agents. And there was that last minute draft agreement. I did the comments as I think I copied you all on. I did get a response back to my specific comments on, on some of my comments, and I think I copied you on that. Anyway, as an update, they did have a meeting of the towns' Boards of Health with CMRPC. Apparently no one else had any comments, so they used my comments as the basis of their meeting. And just late this afternoon, I got a draft, a revised draft. So I haven't looked at it yet. I will look at it to the extent I have, and I'll share it with you. To the extent I have comments, I'll copy you. You know, it looks like they're trying to get some sort of, you know, buy into it by all of the various boards in in the various towns. But I'm not sure what the specific timeframe is. I'm hoping it's not sooner than the July 12 meeting. And if it is, I'm gonna make the point that you all don't meet until July 12. So anyway, that, that's that, that's one item. Senior tax work off on the, going up on the website tomorrow should be, you know, it's a one page description of the opportunities that we, you know, I polled all the department heads, what their needs will be. It's basically, you know, administrative support, copying, faxing, filing, to the extent people can assist in permitting types of things for either building or Board of Health or, or whomever, that would be helpful. If they have, you know, I'm asking, we're asking for brief summary of their interest and their background. If they have resumes, that would be helpful. Right now, we know of one person who's interested beyond the two that are already working for the senior center. The opportunities will be for the Building Department, the Board of Health, you know, general admin, the town clerk. Library could use somebody if they're familiar with Dewey Decimal System and I think book catalogs or something. So that, that's all briefly described in what's going up on the website. They're to send their interest emails and or letters to town hall, to the business office. And we'll take it from there. Metacomet Emergency Communications Center, latest meeting. They said it looks like August that they'll have us connected and up and running. We'll see, but at least what we have confirmed as of late Friday. State 911 is providing the grant to Metacomet to cover all of their costs. So there will be no charges to the town of Millville as we had forecasted and but you know, the, the such and such lady wasn't singing quite yet. Now that it's confirmed that the lady's singing. So that's, that's a good sign. And included in that, the chief told me today was also going to be a tower that he's been after State 911 for at least 10 years now. So there'll be a tower going up at, you know, up at MES, basically, which will allow for better communications within the town as well as with Metacomet. That's all good news there.
Okay, great. All right. Item's not reasonably to say for you. I was prior to meeting. So we did have something, Peter?
Yeah. So what you have came up late morning today is, turns out there's going to be an event at Marty's Liquors where they will be outside with food trucks and some form of serving alcohol subject to this board providing them a one day liquor license. We have since gotten an application. The application that I sent you was what we had gotten so far. It needed some amendment. But it's Caribbean Delights is the vendor who's seeking the application. They have since sent insurance. You know, an insurance binder that shows the town of Millville is included in that. That's one of our requirements. They also sent their servers current tips certification form, another requirement of the town. I'll be performing a Corey on the person, on the head guy, head person, actually, I'm not sure. Male or female, frankly. And so we're closing in on putting all the things together. This of, so it does just requires you to vote on that. The chief has to sign off on it. And he on the form, and he has some concerns that will be reflected in how they set their event up so that it it's certain that no minors are allowed to get in and get access to any alcohol that might be served. Whether that's an enclosure, a tent, or some other form of identification. That's, we don't know that yet. So.
And Peter, it looked like there were three dates that they eventually were seeking for right now.
No, I'm just asking for this, this one on June 26. So you'll get more information on the other two events because those actually, I believe, are for Garden Wonders. This is for Marty's Liquors.
Okay.
Okay.
When do they send it in?
Just today.
And the event's the 26th?
Yes.
And don't they do this like?
Not how we like it. We like it 30 days in advance and we like people to fill out forms. Yes.
And I was gonna say, isn't this a thing that Marty's Liquors usually does every year around this time?
This is the first word of it, so I don't know that.
I remember a couple of times that we've done this.
They've done it one other time at least that I know of.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's annual, like every year, but I do remember they did at least one other time.
Yeah.
So do, um, we need to take a motion to approve this here? Okay.
Yes.
And it meets all your requirements. You mentioned the insurance finder.
That's right. So you should have it subject to them complying with all of the requirements by the town, including the police chief. How about that?
Okay.
And we'll make sure of that, obviously.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to accrue a one day liquor license for Caribbean Delights, provided they satisfy all the requirements of the town of Millville, Massachusetts, including any requirements that come from the Chief of Police.
So moved?
Looking for a second? I'll second. A discussion. So Andrew, it looks like you have, what's your concern?
Yeah, for one thing, I'm not sure how we can vote on something that was put on, was not on the agenda. And that was also within the 48 hours that we just received. Not sure how that works. And the other thing is, is that they sent this like literally the week of the event. That's poor timing on their part. I mean, it's kind of inexcusable. So, you know, I feel like, you know, you snooze, you lose if you messed up. Kind of can't make everybody else just jump over hoops just to get your own event done. It's kind of why you have event planning.
Yeah. So on your first point, whether we can vote or not, I think that we can because there is, like, we always have prior to meeting, like that's kind of a standing item. I put it on there just, you know, four things that come up. So and on the second point, I will say, so I have this philosophy just in life generally. And it's when I can say yes, I will. Like, just why not? Why not try to be flexible and accommodate if you can be? You're right, Andrew. This is very, very late. You're having an event in five days. You didn't think you needed liquor license. You start planning this today. They absolutely knew they needed to come to us sooner. But the flip side of that is like, we can say yes. So I like to be accommodating and trying to say yes when I can. And that's a life philosophy of Jennifer Gill. Everyone here owes me $5 for that now. Life changing. But that's just something I personally try to do.
No, no, I totally see it. But at the same point, if you kind of keep people, allowing people to do this type of stuff, you then just become a rubber stamp and get run over all the time. So, you know, sometimes you just kind of put your foot down, I feel. But, you know, it's up to everybody else, what you think.
No, no, Andrew, you're always very principled and consistent. And I appreciate that as well. Like I said, I try to, but I can't say yes. I want to. I tried to say.
So Peter, let me ask you this, just because, sorry to cut you off, Jen, and I thought maybe. Is this a revenue generating event for Millville? I mean, if we say no to the liquor license, do, does that mean we lose like tax on it or?
Yeah, no. So there's no real additional tax for the town on this. No. This is, you know, it's a fee just for this application that they have to provide us. And it's 25 or 35 bucks. So it really is more, what do you think is in the best interests, I guess, of, you know, the residents of Millville? And if this fosters, you know, economics, success of Marty's likely. Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. I don't know. But it certainly must be a draw for potential customers there. it certainly must be a draw for potential customers there, and I suspect, given the location of Garden Wonders and their plan for future events in the same location, that there'll be, you know, by, you know, the additional benefits to Garden Wonders from the, from this particular event, where, yes, we do get, uh, a financial benefit, both from their three percent impact fees and their three percent local option sales tax, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm aligned with Jen, I would, I would vote to approve this, I think that they got it in before their event. I, I take your point well, Andrew, and had this been a meeting, a week we weren't having a meeting, I mean, I wouldn't advocate for us to have a special meeting because someone was late in their submission, but they did get it in tonight, Peter was able to put it on the agenda for the forty-eight hours, and so I don't think there's any reason to really penalize, although I'm sure Peter can have a conversation with them, that it really, you know, what the board's input or feedback was, and what the regular process is, and the expectation is that we would get stuff like this way in advance in the future.
So I will call for a vote.
Hi.
Hi. Adrian, I got yours too. Opposed?
Aye, nay.
Okay.
All right, so I guess I have a question on that, what does that mean, since, is it, we have to have a quorum vote, or we just have, uh, of the quorum have a majority vote, just a question?
Yes, you have a quorum, you had a majority vote, I think that's sufficient to enable this liquor license.
Thank you.
And you can do it within the forty-eight hours, that's why they have that sort of thing, but, uh, but yeah, I totally agree, I mean, I was down to, you have another hour, if I don't get it, you're not having it, because I'm not bringing it forward, end of story. Don't ever do it again.
Okay. Um, so as mentioned, our next regular meeting is July twelfth, and we'll be doing appointments, among other things. I will sign the meeting minutes and drop those off at the Town Hall for May third and May seventeenth. So pending anything else, I think we're ready to go into executive session. Okay, so. I read these last time, I feel like someone else needs a turn.
I'll make a motion.
Andrew.
There you go. There's. So, I move that the Board of Selectmen enter into executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Teamsters Union Local one-seventy Millville, Town of Millville Police Officers. I move further that Board of Selectmen move, enter into executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Teamsters Union Local. I'm sorry. Move that the Board of Selectmen enter into executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy relative to pending litigation, Herto v. Millville et al., where discussion of these matters in open session would have a detrimental effect on litigating position of the town, and to reconvene an open session to adjourn the meeting. Further move that the town, the Board of Selectmen enter into executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A one and two, to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations, contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Sorry, public speaking was not my forte.
That's okay, Andrew, um, did you read all of B, the Town of Millville Firefighters Unit? Did you read that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Yes, the, yeah, Local one-seventy firefighters, union, unit.
Okay.
I believe, yeah.
Okay, so, looking for a second.
I'll second.
Okay. And we need to do a roll call vote, so Andrew Awad.
Aye.
Adrian Pettit.
Aye.
Jennifer Gill, also aye. Okay, Alex, so if you want to cut the live feed and then, uh, make me the host, and then you can have a good night.
All right.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you, Alex.